I think that's where it's at. Yes, yes. Brian, if I should have been there.
Well, because you can't hear it.
Oh, my goodness. Now you're towering.
It'll be okay. It's either too low or too high. Can you lower that?
Yeah, this guy right here.
I tried that, but I can't see it moving.
This is on the ground right there.
You did it. Thank you. I'm not good at this with mechanical.
We are reconvening from closed session where direction was given and no action was taken. Will you stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looking for a motion to adopt the agenda.
I move that we adopt the agenda as written.
Motion carries.
Moving on to presentations and proclamation, we, proclamations, we have one proclamation this evening for Sexual Assault Awareness Month proclamation. Is anyone here to accept this? Okay, Claudia, we're asking you to accept this proclamation from the city of Orville. It's recognizing that April 2019 is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, whereas one in five women and one in 67 men will encounter rape in their lifetime, and one in six boys and one in three girls will experience a sexual assault before the age of 18. The goal, the goal of Sexual Assault Awareness Month is to raise public awareness about sexual violence and educate communities on how to prevent it, knowing it impacts nearly every community member in the city of Orville, and whereas the theme of this year's campaign is, I ask, informing individuals on how they can use their words to help others and stop sexual violence before it happens, promoting safety, respect, and equality, and whereas individuals need to use their voice to stand up to victim blaming, stop rape jokes, correct harmful misconceptions, promote consent, and practice healthy communication with kids, and whereas survivors of sexual assault should be embraced and treated with dignity, compassion, and respect, and whereas for the past 45 years, rape crisis intervention and prevention has led the way in Orville in addressing sexual violence by providing a 24-hour crisis line services to victims, survivors, and their significant others, responding to emergency calls, counseling, ongoing support, and comfort to those impacted by sexual violence. Now, therefore, I Chuck Reynolds, Mayor of the city of Orville, in concurrence with the city council, do hereby proclaim April 2019 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and April 24th, 2019, as Denim Day and urge our community to take all response, reasonable action to prevent sexual violence and to increase participation in all efforts leading to the prevention of sexual assaults. Well, I tell you, even though you know things are happening, they just sort of hit you when you see it in writing, and I apologize if I got a little emotional there, but it's horrific. Okay, moving on to public communications, hearing and non-agenda items, this is part of the meeting where members of the public, if they wish to speak on any item, they're more than welcome to. Hopefully, you've presented a blue card. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Mr. Mayor, we have 12 speakers, therefore, the time limit will be a minute and 30 seconds.
Thank you.
Our first speaker is Sherri Bunker, and then Bobby O'Reilly, and then Tasha Livingston.
Good evening, Madam, dang it, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm sorry. I passed out earlier, HR 1629, for everybody to read, I'm asking that you guys, as a former dispatcher for over 20 years, I ask that you guys support this. It's through the House of Representatives, and it's to reclassify dispatchers as first responders. The, the council member, or the congress member that's supporting this was a dispatcher for over 20 years also. And on that note, as this is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, I would ask Chief LeGron to come up. Bill, that would be you.[584.32][584.32](laughter) You're running me out of time, dude. On behalf of the Exchange Club of Orville, I proudly present this certificate of appreciation to the Orville Public Safety Dispatchers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.[603.16][603.16](applause)
Bobby O'Reilly, and then Tasha Livingston, and then Bill Spear.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'd first like to apologize to the council, to the community, to the citizens of Orville for my conduct at the last meeting. I showed a little more emotion than I would like, and my apology specifically to Council Member Goodson and Council Member Draper for my comments and my, my aggressive appearance. I am very passionate about our community in this town. It brings emotions out when things happen that need said or need done, and I just get very, like I stated, passionate about the things that I feel about our community. After the elections, the community asked for a peaceful resignation of two council members, Member Goodson and Member Draper. Now we are demanding a recall of the two. You have been served your notice of intent of recall right when you came out of closed session. I do apologize also to the community for not doing the recall sooner. Please refer to the censure that you placed on previous Mayor Linda Dahlmeier, and note that you are violating the same articles that you quoted in her censure. If you can please just take note of that, it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Tasha Livingston, Bill Spear, and then Jack Kylie.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just wanted to follow up on what the status is on the housing for female workers that was to go on the corporation yard and the status of the property swap that was to occur in exchange for the excavation of that, to find out what has happened with that, and if I cannot find out at this meeting, could you please include it to let us know at the next meeting?
Bill Spear, Jack Kylie, and then Randy Murphy.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, I'm really grateful to be here this evening to pray over our city and, and over all of you, and just really encouraged about this new season for our city and to be able to be involved and be able to contribute, and for all of the people in our city who have been stepping up and, and jumping in and getting activated, and my grandson right now is in Washington DC, and hopefully he comes back and, and shows a little more interest also. So in the 101st Psalm, it says, "Enter into his gates with thanksgiving and into his courts with praise." So Father, I thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us, Lord, and for our beautiful city, for your, the public servants, Lord, for the mayor and the vice mayor and the city council, we pray your blessings upon them. Lord, as a navigate forth, we pray for wisdom, we pray for all of the staff here who work, been working hard for, for less money, we pray for their families, we pray for our police and our firefighters, we pray for our whole county, for Orville as the county seat, we pray for the homeless and the Hope Center and the Rescue Mission and, and all of the, the public groups, bless them in Jesus's name. Amen.[851.13][851.13](bell rings)
Jack Kylie, Randy Murphy, and then Linda Dahlstrom.
Mayor Honorable Counsel, I'll be very brief tonight. Three years ago, I got involved in this water thing, and I put a lot of time in on it, and I had one thing that drove me to that, that was the blight of the city, seeing our dry yards and stuff that, we can do better than that. So we've worked with CPUC, with the hearing here, and with that, and I give you an under little deal, I also give you a packet of our formal response to the CPUC, and what we're basically asking is, Cal Water, you've got eyes too, you see the city where we are, this island that has become a dust bowl, and what we want is to suggest, we said in the rate case, we've asked, and I hope they hear us, reduce your rates by 50%, we'll use 40% more water, we'll make all of our town green, and that's what we're basically after, and so hopefully, they'll see it, but the rate case they've got here, you can see the things when the people water their yawn, they're going to be paying up to almost $5 per unit versus 74 cents from Thermaleto and 41 cents from South Feather, which takes about 70% of our area. So we want nothing more and want nothing less, I will keep pursuing that, hopefully this case, early in June, they'll act on this case. I have very little hope that they'll see it, our way to ask that, but if they don't, we have other options, and I'll be back again at that time, and we'll probably have to pursue those other options, and, and we will be ready to do that, but I appreciate your 7-0 vote on the opposing no rate case, which is sent in part of our packet to the CPUC again, but look forward to continued support and working with you. Thank you.[950.73][950.73](applause)
Randy Murphy, Linda Dahlstrom, and then Diane Brown.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, and Council, not Mayor, Council. I just want to make a couple of announcements regarding Feather River. I believe everyone in the room knows that Director Emberlin passed away about a week and a half ago.
Yes.
On Thursday this week, we will have a special meeting to announce the vacancy on the board, so I'm just putting it out there to anybody in the room and/or watching in TV land, that we will be announcing a vacancy and recruiting for another director soon. We also coincidentally have several full-time and part-time openings within the district, so take this opportunity to invite people to apply for the various jobs, you can look on our website, www.frrpd.com. I believe I saw many of you down at the Wildflower event on April 6th, it was a very successful event, in spite of the weather, in spite of the high river, we estimate crowd, total crowd somewhere around 2,500 for the day. Hopefully, next year, we have a bigger crowd because the weather will be better. Our next event will be the Fourth of July festivities, the Fourth at the Four Bay at Nelson Park, obviously, the State Park also has their simultaneous event there, and Palermo. We've had a lot of folks call and about concerned about Palermo Park, understand that the playground has been out of service for about six months, and we are working, and will be an item on our agenda next week, to get a contractor and to complete that work. We've had a lot of complications due to weather and other unforeseen, unforeseen circumstances. Murphy's Law strikes again.[1054.01][1054.01](laughter)
Linda Dahlstrom, Diane Brown, and then William Bynum.
Oops. Hi, I just wanted to say, I wish that, that the city council in Orville could get along and support all of their city council members, and I think that it's, when, when we listen to opposing points of view, that, that it makes us better, and also, these two, Linda and Janet were, were voted in, you know, by the voters, and so I think this is, you know, I think it's unpatriotic, and that's really all I wanted to say.[1107.47][1107.47](applause)
Diane Brown, William Bynum, and then Don Foltz.
Good evening, I'm here in support of Janet and Linda. Also, my name's Diane Brown, and I live up in the foothills. I wanted to say that it was my understanding that these two women have been taken off their committee assignments, and I taught for a long time, and we, in teaching, we always had committees that we were divvied up on, and everybody took their turn, and different people had different expertise and experience that came to the table. So someone might be very athletic, and they'd be a good athletic director, I'd be a horrible one, but maybe I do well with science, and so we divvied up that way. And, so what makes sense to me is if there's a certain number of committees, let's say there's 21 committees and seven people to go on committees, everyone would have three committees, and that would be based on their expertise, experience, and interests, so, I mean, just like what we used to do in the school district was, you would have a piece of paper and you list in order your top three choices for committee assignments, and then the assignments would be made based on people's interest. It also seems ridiculous to me to have seven people that could be out in the community representing the folks, and somebody's going to seven meetings and someone else has none, and then it just, it seems like a waste of resources, of human resources, and I want to say, these two women, I've spent quite a bit of time with them, and I just find them to be delightful, and energetic, and professional, so that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.[1211.58][1211.58](applause)
William Bynum, Don Foltz, and then Liza West.
Good evening, Bill Bynum, live in Orville on Lone Tree Road. I also want to address what I think is a travesty, taking the two female members off committees and leaving the five male members to represent all those other committees, doesn't, doesn't make any sense to me, in fact, I think it's an injustice, and I turned in a public records request just to see, because I saw on the paper, one of the criteria was attendance, and when I looked at the four council members who have served for the last two years, I saw that the best attendance were Mr. Hatley, Ms. Goodson, Ms. Draper, the abysmal attendance was Mr. Thompson, who missed 15 out of 64 meetings, missed 23% of meetings, and yet he's the vice mayor. So to me, that's hypocritical, and what I would like to see is, I would like to see this rectified, and the committees be reapportioned, reassigned in a just manner, and that we get back to being civil and treating each other with respect. Thank you.[1292.83][1292.83](applause)
Don Foltz, Liza West, and then Fred Spinger. Liza West, Fred Spinger, and then Julie Singler.
Good evening, Council. I have good news. Thank you, thank you, thank you for starting the work on Mesa Avenue. I live on Mesa Avenue, and it's been terrible to look at that, that with containers and broken, rusty nails, et cetera. You've taken most of it away, and I guess you haven't finished, so I hope you will finish, and it'll be cool. The cement is broken on the sidewalk, and there are a couple of holes at the stop sign in the cement, or in the, on the floor, on the ground, and I want to say that thank you very much for, for your new elections and that you're here, but I want to put in a good word for Ms. Goodson and Mrs. Draper, please don't take them away, Orville has too much work to do. We need everybody on every committee possible, and volunteering for anything that they have time for. Please reconsider. We need all of you guys, and those that are working for us. Thank you.[1383.21][1383.21](applause)
Fred Spinger, and then Julie Singler.
Hi, Fred Spinger, I just wanted, I also wanted to talk about Councilors Goodson and Draper. I know them from many, many community events that we've done together, and I know them as intelligent, thoughtful, and really community-driven, and I just feel like, I was going to be saying it's a disservice not to have them on the committee, but I think, I want to change that to, we're missing out by not having them on the committee, the city is missing out. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.[1428.88][1428.88](applause)
Our last public speaker is Julie Singler.
Good evening, I'm Julie Singler. What? I couldn't hear you. Oh, you can't hear me? Okay, help it now. Thank you. So, the last thing I thought I'd be doing is coming here to speak to you tonight, but, and I barely know the politics of Orville, but I had heard that the women on this committee, on the council had been removed from their committees, and at first, when I heard that, I thought that was just really bad politics, but when I heard this morning on the news that they had been removed for poor performance, I felt saddened and disappointed and sick to my stomach, and felt I had to come down here and find out what the heck is going on, for if their names have been besmirched and dragged through the mud to further someone's political agenda, I say shame on that person, whoever they are, I don't know who they are, but shame on you. It is wrong, very wrong. I haven't had the opportunity to see the bylaws or code of conduct in city council members, and I was wondering if they're available to the public, because I'm, I'm wondering, is it written in the city council, that if it is, city council person misses two meetings, the punishment is to be censored and removed from the committees? Is it the job of the mayor to review performance of council members and punish them as he sees fit? Going forward, if other city council members miss meetings, will they be censored and sanctioned as the women are? If the mayor misses meetings, whose responsibility is it to sanction him and take away his duties? I would urge the mayor and council to do all, do the right thing and reinstate these women and show them the respect they deserve. Thank you.[1534.21][1534.21](applause)
Is that the last speaker?
Yes, it is, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar, looking for a motion to accept the consent calendar.
Can we poll item two?
Polling item number two, looking for a motion to accept the consent calendar, less item two.
I move that we accept the consent calendar exempt item two.
I second.
I'll take care of it.
Bill, would you like to speak on item number two?
No, I'd like to hear whatever the question was, anyone had that I might be able to answer.
Absolutely. Councilmember Hatley?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I have a question, I just wanted to poll so I could, I could vote on it as a standalone item rather than on the consent agenda.
Yes.
That's the only reason.
Any other comments from the dais? Any public comments? Looking for a motion to accept item number two.
I move we accept item number two as agendacized.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, we inadvertently skipped one person on non-agenda items, if we could bring that back for that individual, they did put in a card, we, it just got mixed into the other ones.
Kevin Thompson.
Thank you. My dear friend, Mr. Spear, you prayed already, but I prayed for you guys on the way out here, so I'll miss my prayer, but I refuse to believe that these two women, Linda Draper and Janet Goodson, are incompetent, uneducated, and without the ability to lead the constituents that put them into office. I think about the spillway, which Ms. Goodson, I didn't hear it from the bullhorns or the news, but they took the initiative to give me a phone call, I was in Chico with church families at that particular time, was not able to get back into the town, so I'm so thankful for them. Also, the property cleanups, and those that, through the years, knew that Ms. Goodson had a program put together, all the donated bins, and we were just cleaning up, it was a community event, we're so grateful for that, Linda, the lower water rates, have been fighting to save Orville's historic trees, and the list just goes on and on, so I'm not so concerned. If I walk down a dark way and fall in a deep hole and can't get out for whatever reason, I can care less if it's a woman or a man, just throw me a rope to help me out, and this is what these women have done throughout the community, so I would just encourage each and every one of us, and you heard the old saying, before democracy will die in darkness.
Thank you. Moving on to regular business.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. What you have before you tonight to consider is an urgency ordinance, the adoption of that, to amend Chapter 9.08 of the Orville Municipal Code, the nuisance code. What this will do is, this will put this ordinance into effect immediately, it will be good for 45 days, prior to the expiration of the 45 days, this we brought back to the council, it will be fully noticed in a public hearing to amend this ordinance. What we're wanting to do right now is amend this particular section of the municipal code so that we can straighten out some of the issues that we have with our nuisance ordinance right now. One of the problems that we've been running into with code One of the problems that we've been running into with code enforcement is our inability to immediately gain access to properties that are nuisance, that are public safety issues, that have outstanding problems on them. We've been working with Cole and Huber, and they have an attorney that has recently joined their firm that is an expert in code enforcement, and he has recommended these changes so that we can get more immediate and access to the properties to do that. So what we're asking to do is to amend the ordinance under the emergency status so it can go into effect immediately. And what we want to do is, this ordinance changes will give us immediate right-of-entry to abate certain code violations on property. It will make the property owners responsible for the cost of the cleanups, including city staff time and attorney fees, and it streamlines our process for abatement of nuisances which are deemed public safety hazards. That's been kind of all backwards in our code, and we've been kind of struggling with that. Our code as it currently exists is a very laborious, tedious process that doesn't allow us to get more quickly to these problems. And we have several problems that have been outstanding for a long time that need to be dealt with.
Thank you. We have Vice Mayor Thompson in the queue.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and I had a discussion about this this morning, and I just had some questions that he had some pretty good answers for, and as well, I wanted to bring them to you regarding this item. What I did not read in the language, and maybe you can help me find it, is specifically those words that you said, "public safety hazard." Is that in the language with the ordinance that we're proposing tonight? Because I don't want to necessarily, you know, make this into weaponize our public safety and, because there were some things, they're like inch tall, I mean, one foot tall weeds and people who needed to paint their house and...
Correct.
You know, bushes that potentially could have rats in them. I mean, that's pretty, I don't want somebody to come on my property if I have weeds that are foot tall and immediately take care of it and then charge me for it.
There are specific sections in here. The second part of the staff report that you received shows what's been lined out, striked out, and what's been changed. I don't know off the top of my head specifically where the public safety hazard is, but I can tell you this, as long as I'm here and I'm working here, we're not going to have any sort of militarized code enforcement program. You know, I'm very big on personal property rights, and I'm also very big on being reasonable with people. You know, I can't think of, and I'm not going to say it's never happened though, where we've ever went and cited anybody for not painting their house. And I know as soon as I say that, somebody's going to come and let me know, oh, yes, you did. But I'm sure, there has to be more of a reason. For any issue that we address through code enforcement, it must be driven by a complaint. It's not going to be driven by a code enforcement officer driving around and saying, "I don't like the way that house looks," or "they need to mow their grass." It has to be driven by a complaint, or it has to be driven by a safety issue such as grass cutting could be something during fire season, when you have tall weeds that are close to your house, or you have property that's just not being taken care of.
And I agree with that. Is there a way that we could, if it's not there, put, oh, you found it already?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I reviewed this ordinance after it was drafted by a three-attorney team out of my office. If you look to Section 9.08.120, that talks about the immediate abatement of dangerous or substandard buildings or structures. And then obviously, you can also engage in efforts where they may not be dangerous per se, under the nuisance abatement definition in 9.08.110.
You're going too fast for me. I found 9.08.120, and then you said the other one is what?
The one right before it defines your general nuisance abatement process.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, then this whole section here will give you like a roadmap for how the city would commence a proceeding to do that immediate abatement and what circumstances a person would be able to then come to know about a violation, proof of service, whether they can have an appeal or a hearing. But 9.08.120 allows the immediate abatement of it if it's a dangerous situation. It's more narrow than, you know, just your general nuisance like you were talking about.
Great. That answers my question. And as well, I got an email today, concerned citizen had the same concern as far as, you know, we're all for, I think, I don't know anybody in town except maybe the person who has the house that needs to be abated. But the majority of the citizens that I've, at least I've spoken to are in favor of cleaning up blight. I mean, it's been a pretty big talking point throughout the community. So just a matter of doing it in such a way we're not infringing on people's rights and making sure that we're not, you know, weaponizing our code enforcement for people who have weeds that are, you know, weed, with the rain, the weeds can grow pretty fast. And so I know currently there's a date which you already need to mow your lawn if you have fields and whatnot. So just as long as we are moving this forward with also protecting people's rights, because eventually I won't be on this council, and who knows who's going to be the public safety officer or on the dais, and I wouldn't want to be on the other side of that if it's the other way around.
And just for clarity, the peeling paint and those things, those currently are in our code as it currently exists.
Right.
So we're not adding anything new to that.
I understand that. Right. Okay.
But thank you for the question, Mr. Vice Mayor. I appreciate having the input to respond to your question.
Thanks.
Councilmember Pittman.
Yeah, two quick, my own, yeah, two quick comments, and one is in that 9.08.120. It references the building official and/or his discretion. I might suggest that we add the fire marshal and/or fire chief, because the building code allows the fire chief some additional powers to declare a building unsafe. So we might add that in there just for clarity. It doesn't change anything, but just so that we don't have a confusion of positions, something to add in there, more of a technical nature. The other question I have is, I see the notice to the property owner, which is proper and just, to make that property owner responsible. And you may be able to answer this from the legal point, but do we also have an ability to make the lien holder or the bank that holds the property responsible for issues? Because many times, that's where we get lost in the mixture. The property owner's absent, it becomes the bank or lien holder or some other lien holder that just has a lien on the property. I just want to make sure we find somebody responsible.
Right. So the typical process, when you have an abatement and there's a cost that goes with it, is that you can get an assessment lien on the property, which means that when it transfers hands, that can be resolved through an escrow process. But you can't force a resolution of that or a sale on an assessment lien in less than five years. So sometimes when you have a serious property like that, you would move to a receivership type of model if you needed to resolve it more quickly than that. So there are tools to do that. Anybody who records something on the property, the lien holder is going to become aware of that at some point along the way, usually in fairly short order. But there are mechanisms that are already built into the process to deal with that, other than need to be put into the ordinance itself. And it is a good observation on 9.08.120 with respect to the fire marshal. I will tell you that because we're enacting this as an urgency ordinance, the maximum duration of the ordinance is 45 days. So what you're going to have is you're going to have this come back before you as part of a public hearing to extend it in a permanent capacity. And so we will look at, and I'll communicate that kind of observation so that when you see it come back with minor revisions, if any, for, in its permanent form, that those can be addressed.
I appreciate that. I know of another tool that many times, a property owner that has a mortgage with the bank, the banks typically have a maintenance clause in that mortgage or in that agreement to that. I would want to make sure that we have access to that, too, and some other process. I don't know, believe it's necessary in this ordinance, which may come forward after your 45-day period. But that has been a very useful tool in the past, especially in larger properties that are apartment houses and those kind of things.
Good observation. Let me be clear, too. I'm not waiting until the 45th day to...
Right, understood, yeah.
Get this done permanently for you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments from the dais? Any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have two speakers. And I'm going to try to read this handwriting. It says M. Seeley, and then Tasha Livingston.
Thank you, Bill.
Hi, I'm Rita Seeley, and I want to say thanks to all of you on the council. I know it's a hard job, and so we appreciate your work. But as far as the notice on this, if it's a nuisance, it's probably been in existence for a while, and so why not give the property owner the 15 days? I think that 24-hour notice just doesn't seem reasonable to me at all. So I'm in opposition to that part of it. I really think we need to do the cleanup and the abatement, and I like the idea, but I'd still like to see that notice be, you know, in appropriate length of time. Thank you.
If I might, just, I know we don't necessarily need to answer, but if I can answer some of your questions, there are a couple situations that arise to our awareness that were existing, however, weren't necessarily aware of. We don't have, you know, drones watching everybody's properties all the time, right now, maybe in the future. But there are situations that arise that basically are a public safety hazard, which we didn't know about before the situation was there. But either, you know, as you said, complaint-driven, somebody notifies us, or we become aware of a situation that is of absolute, you know, it's a safety hazard for kids in the community or, you know, well, specifically, that's probably a high priority. And so in that case, it's really important that the city take care of that situation before anybody gets hurt and whatnot. And so in that situation, we need to be able to, you know, have the code enforcement, you know, take care of it. I'll give you, I'm not sure if I can, the situation that arose recently with the pool, that's not, that's not private.
Well, I can give an example. We had a building that had some old wiring and unsafe couplings with respect to gas, and so that was something that was exceptionally urgent because, you know, if you wait 24 hours, that building could just become a crater. So...
And if you notice the property owner immediately, it seems like they would abate it themselves.
Sometimes, I understand, and sometimes...
And that would save the city all the cost of cleaning it up and then billing the property owner for maybe huge costs, which would cause the property owner to maybe lose their property. I mean, it's kind of a slippery slope. You take away these rights, and it could really affect a lot of people's lives.
I'll give you another situation as well that might answer that. There's often situations where houses aren't occupied, and even there are owners who don't live in the area. And if a property gets dilapidated, oftentimes there's just a lack of care, period. And so there was a situation that arose where there was a pool and access for kids to get in it. And so that needed to be, you know, a fence put around it immediately. And so again, if we waited 24, 48, you know, two weeks and said, hey, where are you at? And the person's not responding, and potentially a child falls into it, and we're like, well, we were trying to go by the, you know, two-week rule. And so there's a situation where we're trying to, you know, not necessarily infringe on people's rights or property rights, but make sure that the community's safe, the kids are safe, you know, if there's things going on.
And I do understand that, but if, but also the pool, how long was it there unoccupied? I mean, was there sufficient time to give that 15 days notice? And if, you know, if there's somebody watching it, or, you know, if you're aware of it, you could, the police could keep tabs on it and contact the owner? I just still think that that 24-hour notice is just unreasonable.
I hear you. Thank you.
And I think it's a violation, too, of the due process. Thank you.
Councilmember Pittman.
Yeah, I appreciate the notice and the discussion on that. I will add, though, I think the workload is going to drive this. As my current numbers are, code enforcement has somewhere between 500 and 600 cases open. And because of the delay in reporting time, we can't really take action on so many. And I can think of at least two to three dozen burned-out structures that should fit under this, and because we had the other process, they've been there for months, if not years. So I see a burned-out structure as a much higher safety hazard than the smaller issues that may come about. So I think it's a workload issue. We just can't grab a hold of this animal.
The city doesn't have enough employees to go and put the notices on, because the building's been there for years, I think.
Right.
So if they would have put the notice on, then next week, three years, we can go back to the issue. I still think that that doesn't...
Well, I appreciate that, but our system isn't working. We need to change it.
Councilmember Smith.
Taking into consideration that concern, I think, I think there's some legitimacy given at the current time with the chief and his perspective. I would certainly trust his judgment. But I mean, if you had a heavy-handed administrator, government official, they could, I mean, there is a potential utilizing this to be an overreach at some point. Not probably tomorrow, but I mean, is there a way that we could have extenuating circumstances? In other words, typical blighted property that has been an ongoing issue for an extended period of time that we all know about? That's one thing, you know, due time, you know, giving somebody 15 days, whatever that is. And then I see within the ordinance here that there is the opportunity, when they had 24 hours, for a person to respond, which shouldn't have shut down that immediate abatement. But I don't know if there's a way to insert, as we move along here, some additional language to protect citizens from that concern of government overreach, which could, I mean, I get it. And you could see where someone, they interpreted it that way, talking about on the city side, to get a little heavy-handed.
Well, I appreciate that perspective. Understand that when we talk about summary abatement, which is the process of going through with abating something immediately because it poses an imminent threat to health and safety of individuals, the liability associated with not addressing a known concern is enormous. You end up with situations like San Mateo, where you had a utility and a neighborhood explodes, right? These are kind of situations that can evolve into catastrophic problems. Now, when the 24-hour notice is given, correct this problem, or we're going to be there in 24 hours, and we're going to correct it for you because it's such an imminent problem, if the property owner responds to the city administrator, the 24-hour period could be extended to a reasonable period to allow the property owner to express, you know, what he's going to do to address that problem immediately to, and also to mitigate, and then to long-term correct it. You can see that in 9.08.200, Part C, right?
Yeah, and I saw, and I see that. It's there.
So it's not, it's, this isn't a situation where it's 24 hours or your bulldozers are going to be at the door. This is a situation where you need to respond to this within very short time period because there's an imminent threat to public safety associated with the conditions on the property, which we may or may not have come to understand exists until maybe that very moment. So, you know, I understand the desire for some level of due process, but there is also the protection of the safety of the public that's also at stake. So you're balancing those.
Is there a way to have some language in there that what would be trigger, examples of triggers, like you were already citing earlier for, you know, for...
I'm happy to give examples, but I think, you know, if you, if you list the examples, I mean, they could only be a representative list, and the possibilities of what could evolve into a danger are so broad that it would be hard to capture them all. So I think a list might be a counterproductive thing. I think, I think when you have a public safety official who's deciding this represents an immediate risk, then, I mean, that's what they're hired to do, right? And creating a list that's supposedly going to be something people could look at as exhaustive is an effort that's not going to be, you know, it's not going to end well, because we'll never capture everything.
And just real quick, and this is temporary, 45 days, and then we have another opportunity then to have the public discussion and go through this.
Correct. This is an urgency ordinance, and so because you're doing it in an urgency measure, what happens is it can be valid for up to 45 days, but it has to go through the normal, a normal or a revised process to be extended beyond that time period. So what we would do is we would send out a public notice. This would be the baseline because it's the urgency. And there would be a public hearing and an adoption of the ordinance in a more permanent way. But because we, because we are lacking with an immediate ability to respond to conditions like this that exist, this is why you see it as an urgency ordinance today. So temporarily, it goes into effect right away. And then after the public hearing and the second meeting to discuss the permanency of it, it would become part of your permanent code, so there would be opportunity at a second meeting to do that.
Thank you. I, I think we're probably missing a couple of things. Mr. Ritchie, explain the points that I wanted to make. We hire reasonable people who are good at their jobs, and they can make these assessments of what is life-threatening or an emergency that is going to cause injury or death. I've been privy to some of these emergencies. We're talking, when you're saying swimming pool, everybody's picturing a nice blue pool with a diving board. We're talking about a black murky water full of leaves. You're never going to see a four-year-old in the bottom of that. So I'm telling you that this is, it might be, some of it might look painful, but I think we're getting lost in the details here. We need to expedite code enforcement to address these safety measures. We need to expedite code enforcement to address these safety measures. Thank you.
Good evening again. I'm going to take the opposite side of what prior speaker did and say, look for ways to see if we can make this a little bit stronger, a little bit better teeth into it. It seems to me that after whatever fines, charges, other things have gone through, whatever appeals process you have in this, if those, there is a way that those could become part of the property tax bill assessment that tames the first priority of any dollars paid on property taxes rather than having to wait for a change of ownership, that would be a way to make this more effective. And secondly, it seems to me if you have a single property that is having a series of notices of life-threatening conditions come out, more than six within, over a three-year period or something like that, at some point, this should become criminal. That is blatant disregard of public safety that really should become criminal. And I think at some point, that should be in there. Anyway, I really want to commend you for working together, all seven of you, everyone included, to bring such an important issue to us. I think it will serve us well if we can do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that was the last public speaker.
I want to make sure that we get this in the minutes. Ms. Levinson, I agree with you. Okay, so we're looking for a motion to adopt item number four, urgency ordinance, to amend chapter 9.08 of the Orville Municipal Code entitled Nuisance Code.
I move that we adopt urgency ordinance number 1837.
I'll second that.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to reports, discussions, and correspondence, council announcements, and reports. I would like to go on this. I, it's been a lot of, a lot of social media coverage, a lot of media coverage on cleaning up the blight in, in this town. And there's been a lot of work put towards it. And not to devalue anyone's role in any of that, but this has been worked on diligently for months now by staff and code enforcement. And we enjoyed the first abatement of a blighted property next to Central School yesterday. And. So all of us that, that chose to serve our community, we don't, we don't really get to pick what area we're going to serve in. We just serve, we serve with the servant's heart. So I know that, that none of us who have chosen to serve are, are looking for any credit. We're just looking to better our community. But, but I would like to thank code enforcement staff for working so hard on this. And then I would like to remember the AVA program, which we've towed around 25 vehicles. And I would like to thank Bob Zoller for starting that in 1998. Thank you. Councilmember Draper.
I attended the annual docents luncheon on April 10th at the Monday Club. And this was the third one I've been able to attend. It was really special. They are just an amazing group of people. They have donated thousands, literally thousands of hours to our museums in this city and making it where the citizens have access to those museums. If it weren't for the docents, we could not keep them open. And so I really appreciate them and all that they do. And I also attended on April 15th, the Butte County Homeless Continuum of Care meeting. And the CSC voted to send a letter of support to the Chico City Council regarding the Orange Street Low Barrier Housing for homeless individuals. Lisa Sloan, a consultant from TAC, which is Technical Assistance Collaborative, gave a presentation on ways they'll be assisting the Butte County Continuum of Care. And Butte County Supervisor Tammy Ritter reported that Cal OES and FEMA are only providing 1,200 housing units for campfire evacuees. And she suggested that people contact their local elected officials like Representative Lamolfa and share their concerns about that issue with him. Thank you.
Councilmember Pittman.
I agree with Councilwoman Draper. The docents are a huge valuable asset to our community and it's fun to listen to their excitement and their pleasure in providing service to the museums. It's, I think it's a rare thing for any small city this size to have so many museums and so many people that, as she mentioned, were such a positive to it. It's, it's a, it's a very good thing. The other comment I wanted to make is the, I hope that we're going to, from staff, get an update on the property at City Corporation Yard because there has been some activity. That's the only thing I wanted to make sure that someone asked about that.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, I just want to echo the docent program, wonderful program, so appreciative of all, many, many hours that they give to the city to make us a unique and special place. Just to echo, I also was at the COC meeting and Councilwoman Draper, I think, well-qualified that discussion. A couple of other things that I want to note, we have Feather Fiesta Days up and coming and we have a parade on the 11th of May, so those of you that want to get involved in that. The Exchange Club, thank you Sheri Bunker back there, they're the ones that organized that. So you need to see her or go to the Exchange Club to participate in that wonderful event we have here in our lovely community. Additionally, tomorrow night, there is an event that is partnered by the Chico State and the League of Women Voters of what it means to be an American. It's going to be at our Public Library at 7:00. I'm one of the speakers. And so what does it mean to be an American? And it's, there's, there are a film called The American Creed. It was put together by PBS. And they have three different groups of kids that talk about this at the end of this film. One group from Oakland, another group of kids from Chicago South Side, and another group of kids from Stillwater County, Montana. So very, very interesting. And they're all asked that question. And I think that in our, in our times that we're in in our nation, that's a good conversation to begin. And from where I sit, I just want to quote one quote, and that's from Benjamin Franklin, when he was asked at the Constitutional Convention near the end of his time. He was asked this, "Well, Doctor, what have we got, a republic or a monarchy?" And he's answered with, "A republic if you can keep it." So we've been given a wonderful gift, this thing called America, and it's our responsibility to keep the ball rolling. We're going to talk about it tomorrow night at 7:00 at the library. You're all invited.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodson.
I as well attended the docents luncheon last week. And I just wanted to say that we as a council, but I personally just want to applaud and appreciate the countless, the selfless volunteer hours that the docents, both individually and collectively, continue to give to our community, to our museums, to keep them open and to keep them clean. I also appreciate their diligence in recruiting as well. And they recruited two additional staff, so I want to commend them for that. Last night, I attended the monthly NAACP meeting. Some items were brought up that were very concerning that exist not just in our community, but on a national level. And that's in regards to the social, the injustices. So we, we continue to address those issues, both on a local and a national level. I also wanted to mention the, I appreciate the efforts of the city staff, of code enforcement. I have been working with both for a number of years, even prior to me sitting right here on the dais. And when, when certain areas had not been annexed into the city, I have looked at, been invited to look at blighted properties and thermal lido foothills throughout. It is not a me, my, four, and no more problem. It's not just in my neighborhood. But we have to look at it as a, a whole because we do represent the, the community. So I wanted to, I wanted to appreciate community members that are right here in this audience that have played such an important role in, in being instrumental in getting this, this ordinance, this urgency ordinance approved. I thank you for your participation. I thank you for your willingness to go outside of your comfort zone and stretch yourselves, even though a lot of you do not live in those neighborhoods that are blighted, but you saw a need, and I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Thompson.
I also want to give a bravo to Eric and the Chamber. Last week I attended their dinner that recognized many nonprofits in our community during, you know, both during our spillway crisis and the campfire. We have an amazing community and. To see the response, you know, we, this community, and I wouldn't say me or any, this, this community in a matter of moments mobilized and organized a, a group and a facility through the Hope Center and through the NAS and through the Rescue Mission and many different entities mobilized in moments to take care of a neighboring city, you know, through outreach, through help, through, you know, people handing out meals and receiving donations. There was tens of thousands of square foot of warehouses that were opened up through citizens to receive trucks that came in. I remember at one point Congressman Lamolfa called me and said, "If we don't find a warehouse for the stuff, we're going to have to, we're going to have to turn these trucks around." And the, the community responded. Warehouses were found and we were able to receive things that Chico, you know, larger city wasn't even able to receive. So I just want to thank Eric and the Chamber for actually recognizing these nonprofits and many of which were not even mentioned because there are just so many in our community that really responded. And those that were associated with organizations and those that weren't, the community rallied around the event. And so I think it really just shines and shows that, you know, as much as Orville gets a bad rap for the community, we have an amazing group of people in Orville. And I think the response and the performance during this catastrophe is a testament to the, just the character of people who live in our community. So thank you, Eric and Chamber for throwing that, and it was a great, great event with amazing food, so thanks. And by the way, there's, there's rumors that it was paid for by tax dollars and that's completely wrong. I can tell you my, anyway, yeah, we paid for it. People who went paid for it. So anyway, thank you for throwing that. And also in your report, whoever needs to, I think it's Chief or whatnot, as far as the railing on Teal Mountain, if you could let us know during your report what's going on with that. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Pittman.
Yeah, the Vice Mayor makes a great point too, and I want to add to, the Salvation Army had put together all the work and borrowed a kitchen trailer from the Bay Area and almost wore it out, just serving so many meals. So they put the request out to have a trailer here in Orville. And it's about a $90,000 item, and they had the money within two weeks. So we'll have our own trailer here very soon for immediate kitchen meals to be provided, so it's pretty cool.
Thank you. Future agenda items. Anyone have anything they wish to put on the agenda?
What are we going to have, 218 meetings for the fees at score? We have to do those, so.
That's going to be scheduled for the next council meeting, Mr. Headley.
Administration reports.
If I could provide just a quick update on the railing, we're currently working with the Public Works Department on finding several different types of railings so that we can take a look at what those look like that also meet certain engineering specifications and needs. So we're going to be bringing those back for you to take a look at before we throw this out there to decide what you think would be aesthetically pleasing for the area. The, the fence idea, you know, albeit that I like it, not many other people do. So we should, I thought we should bring some other things back prior to doing that. So we're still currently working on that. The only thing that I would remind the council of and everybody here, the public, is that on Thursday, we have the Mayor's State of the City Address with the Sam Norris Award as well as the Voice of the Arts. That'll be at 6:00 at the State Theater. Look forward to having everybody there.
Thank you. Ruth, anything? Thank you. Mr. Lehman? Nothing. Mr. Deal? Nothing. Amy?
Well, Mr. Mayor, since there's more time, I'll take it. The, just to update on the Corporation Yard, currently what's going on down at the Corporation Yard is that we have moved in heavy equipment. The individual that owns it, has it down there, is staging it. The vegetation removal has taken place and it has been recycled and repurposed for various things throughout the city. We're currently working with the individuals that are going to prospectively bring in the trailers, the MHUs down there for the necessary grading and groundwork. So that work is underway. It's, doesn't look like a lot's been gone, gone on down there. However, there has been a lot of work that's occurred with getting rid of old debris and things that have accumulated in our yard over the course of many years. So we, kind of the status of it right now is the heavy equipment has arrived. It's there. The debris is out of the way. We're waiting on getting the final engineering so that we know exactly how we're going to be moving the earth that needs to be moved and flattening that out.
Are we going to have to notify code enforcement about that debris in that yard?
Already did.
Okay, well, you know, I would, I would like to say something. You know, we have a, a council here made up of seven individuals. And, and I want everyone to know that this council, every one of them has a heart for the city. We have different personalities and different styles, but at the end of the day, I grew up in a, in a big family. There's nine kids in the house. We could argue and, and fight all day long. But if someone attacks someone in the family, then, then we would empty the house out. And, and that's the way it is. When, when one of us is hurting or struggling, all of us are. It's a, it's a wounded entity. So I would like everyone to keep that in mind while we are working things out for this community. There's some growing pains going on, but I just want you to know that, that everyone here has a heart for this city. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can interject, a member of the audience pointed out to me, the American Creed event is tomorrow night.
Isn't that what I said?
I think you said Thursday, or somebody said that you said Thursday.
It is tomorrow night, so I apologize if I misspoke.
Yes, I just want to make sure that we were clear.
I think I was addressing the question when my event was the Chamber, which was Thursday night.
That might be.
I might have conflicted, conflated the two, but I apologize. It is tomorrow night. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Item number four, correspondence. We have a letter of interest. Are we discussing that? We lost our.
No, we're not. That's just for correspondence. Come back at a future meeting.
Well, that adjourns this meeting and the next meeting will be Tuesday, May 7th, 2019 at 5:30 PM. Thank you. And this is my birthday, so don't give me anything.